Welcome, everyone, to the January 27, 2015 Water Selectments Meeting. Tonight, we have a kind of a small agenda here, and we'll get right into it. So, any announcements? There's no announcements? I don't have anything? Other than the Highway Department did a nice job, real nice job on Highway, on all the highways in town, kept up with everything, and I appreciate that, good job. And, public forum, anyone here for public forum? No? Okay, how about the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes of December 2nd.
Executive session.
Of executive session.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. DPW, go.
Well, I just want to thank the guys, you know, they worked hard all week over the last couple of weeks, and, you know, they did a really nice job, a lot of compliments. The school was very proud that they had school on when everybody else had the two-hour delay, but our schools, you know, went on time, so, you know, I just want to thank them. Like I said, they're a good working crew, so. And the other thing I have is, the last meeting we had, just had a discussion about the Lions Club with the Pavilion, so. I met with the surveyors. I'll just pass them by. So this is the plan that they had, and now I see what happened at the town meeting. As you can see that. See how the building is in that other block, right here?
Yep.
So that's what must have happened when they said...
See, this is the line that I was concerned about, from here to here.
Well, it's right here, this is the line, from this pin to this pin is not straight.
I don't know why they wouldn't make it straight, no.
But see what I mean, how much is, you know, infringing on the town property, so I see what happened there now.
Okay, so, but the way I'm understanding it is the Lions Club, three-quarters of it are on, is that this town property or is this Lions?
That's town property, this is all town property. But it's split in three parcels.
So, okay, so this is one parcel, this is two parcels, this is three parcels over here?
Yeah. See, this is the plan that they brought, so there's one, two, three parcels.
Where's the Pavilion on that one? I see it on the small one first.
Yeah, so it's right in here.
Pavilion's gonna be, yeah, right about here.
Right, because there's the Mill River.
Right, so I think, I mean, to clear it up, to clean the whole thing up, I think you have to have a resurvey.
Okay, because the land is coming out like a V, is what's happened, right?
Right. You have to make a determination of what you want to them to take possession of.
Okay.
Okay, isn't over here a big, open field?
Yes.
Yes. This is, this is the parking lot, the driveway, this is the road.
That's the blacktop, but then off the blacktop, then there's that open field, and then there's the baseball diamond over here, right?
Yeah, I don't know how far down, I think it's in this vicinity.
Somewhere over here.
Because here's the Pavilion, there's the driveway, and so it's, I can see.
It'd be somewhere, somewhere in here.
Right, I think if you straighten this pin out, right?
Or bring those two back, that's...
Or bring them back.
That seems to be what, yes, that, yeah, I think that's what needs to...
But down over and include that.
Right, this piece has to come into this parcel.
So it would be coming, coming down like this, probably in over something like that?
Yeah.
Just to clear that up?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that, I think that, you know...
Then you gotta go back to town meeting.
Right.
First.
Correct.
Right, to determine exactly.
Right, if there's a change in what they said here, then...
Yes.
And it needs to go back to town meeting. But I would check with the new attorney, Paul, and find out, make sure the wording, because they were, they were supposed to do this originally, they're supposed to come up with a plan originally?
Yeah, right.
Okay, but this is the old survey?
Yeah.
So if, if town meeting approval gave the approval to re, to give it back to the Lions Club, okay, with the existing lots, which sounds like they did?
Right.
Then we would need to survey it again, including the Lions Club where it goes over onto the town, the other parcel.
Phil, were you there when they did the pins, or when they looked these up?
Yes.
So how far, do you recall how far down they, they went onto the field, you know, when they verified where these two pins were?
Yeah, I mean, it's not that far into the, into the field, but that, don't forget, that diamond is right here, so, I mean, the playing field is in this parcel.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, right, so...
So I think that the right thing to do is just to take this wherever, come straight across and go across.
Where the tip of that, where this is, and come across this.
So what we're doing is, we're doing this?
I don't think so, I think we're doing, I think we're doing it up the top part.
I mean, I think this could almost stay, this, just the way it is like this.
And then just come straight across?
Follow the parking lot? Yeah, just come like this.
We could just follow the parking lot right down to here and then over.
So we should stake it out, so we have an idea what it is before we, so everyone's on board, before we go to town meeting?
Right, well, I think the first thing you have to do is decide what the board wants to bring to town meeting, and have it to survey or draw to what we want.
Agreed, which is why we should stake it out first, so we can see it.
Because you don't want to go into this discussion prior.
No. You want to have it done once.
Okay, so, again, yeah, and, and we should also get in touch with the, get in touch with the Lions Club to make sure that that's what we're doing here, we're on the same...
I think that, you know, that might be the next step, is to bring them back and then say, you know, this is what we have, the Pavilion's on really two parcels, so...
Right, okay.
Okay, so, the thinking here is to follow the parking lot line down through the blacktop area and then cut across, and let that be...
I would agree, that makes sense.
A square parcel?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Or from, from this point, I should say, not this point.
So maybe, right, so maybe we can share with Billy Corza?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, get a hold of him.
And, you know, and he can see this version of what we're seeing, and then, yep, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Phil.
Clean your carpet. Get that key. Okay, what else you have?
That's all I have, Michael will be coming in, you know, when he gets a chance, the next, within the next meetings or two, and same with Dave Prigott did the survey up in Colonial Acres with some, you know, some ideas of how to correct that problem up there, but that won't be for the next meeting or two.
All right, where do we stand with the sidewalks, the grant that we got to do sidewalks and stuff like that?
They have to survey, obviously the survey is going to be done, maybe after the snow flies, and then just put it out to bid, it's not a really big thing, you just got to make sure the survey's done, so we'll make sure we're on town property.
All right.
The money's in place, I know that the money came in, so...
Okay, and how about North Street, or King, uh, North Street?
That's the other thing, when they survey this, they're going to do that, so, when they do the sidewalk survey and then up there, they're going to do it.
Well, North Street is just going down through the middle of the street, I thought.
They have to lay it out, so...
Okay, all right, so we can plan on that project for the spring?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And Phil, I just wanted to reiterate what Ed and you already mentioned too, but the streets, everything did great, the guys did a great job, so...
We dodged a bullet.
Yeah, well, ten inches is still a lot of snow, but, but they did a, they did a great job, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. What's it?
Can we go out of order?
Which, which one do you want to take up?
The budget meeting, is that what, or...
No, this one's, he's with the Capital Projects here.
Okay.
This is under the warrant articles. We're going to be taking that transmission line, Mike, Mike's not here, the treasurer didn't come for the credit card. Credit card, we're talking about having a credit card for the town, because when Greg Winters had it, it was in his name, so it had to be revoked.
Sure.
I talked with Edwina today, and she basically said that the credit card was used for everything, and it wasn't, the protocol wasn't followed, so we had late fees and stuff like that, and so to avoid any additional problems, she just highly recommended that we don't go with it, mainly because if, I know we wanted it for, like, hotels and stuff like that, but it would fall underneath our own, we'd have to sign for it personally, and if the town didn't pay it on time, it would go against our own credit. So I don't think it's a good idea to even have one if that's the case.
What about the incidental purchases that have to come up for...
She's, she said that almost every purchase that we make, if people plan for it, they, even on the internet, you could have a check cut...
Get a PO.
And send the check out to them and do it that way.
Right.
So it's going to take a little more planning on their part, but on anybody that wants to order it, or they can put it underneath their own personal credit card and then get reimbursed.
So that's the treasurer's recommendation at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I have to agree with her, because that's one thing we don't want to do is...
That's fine, we can always order one if we need to.
Yeah, exactly, so, okay.
So we should just send something out to all the departments, so that...
That there's no longer a credit card being used and that...
And what the process should be for them to...
And what the process should be, right. Paul, you can do that?
Yeah.
Just let everybody know they have to plan ahead when they're ordering things, and they have to get a, if they need a check ahead of time, then that needs to be put on a warrant and, and sent out to them. Okay? Or they can bill the town, one or the other. Okay? Okay, so Mike will be in at some point with the water line. Warrant articles, the article's Capital Projects. Fran, do you want to go over the Capital Projects?
Sure, I've been asked by the Capital Improvement Committee to have a presentation to you concerning the work that we've been doing for the past couple of months on the fiscal 2016 capital proposal, as well as the out years through 2021. I'll limit my comments to 2016, if that's all right, and maybe make a comment or two about 2017. The fir, well, we spent, as I said, about two months talking to various town departments, and I should mention that the members of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee are myself, I serve as secretary, Jeff Boyle is the chairperson, Franz Felicy is a member, Mike Pashek is a member, and Tyler Renzo is a member. And we sat and listened to proposals made by various town departments, starting with the Open Space Committee. They are in the process of planning a redevelopment of Smith Academy Park, which is this area outside that was formerly occupied by the Smith Academy Building, and they came to us with a project that would have been funded, or will be funded, by CPA, and because of their need to go back and refine their proposal, we've moved it from 2016 to 2017, and right now it has a price tag of $286,476. A few of us had some questions or concerns about the proposal. One of the concerns was that there was nothing in the original plan for utilities. That has been addressed in the revision of the plan that's been moved to 2017. The other question or concern we had was the use of blacktop on that site. Currently, there are pavers and a pretty substantial seating area that is pretty easily maintained because of the construction materials that are used, and the concern a few of us had about blacktop is it's much harder to maintain, more subject to the weather, possible breakup, and so on and so forth, but the plan currently calls for blacktop block and a blacktop platform in the van stand or the shell building that will be out there, so I don't know what the plan might be for addressing any of those concerns. The next item for 2016 is the Cemetery Commission. Joe Lavalley made a presentation concerning the Hill Cemetery, and for those not familiar with the Hill Cemetery, it's on the hill behind the Legion, and I believe it's the oldest cemetery, or at least one of the oldest cemeteries in town, and there is a, again, a $28,500 project being funded by CPA to write and restore and conserve gravestones at that cemetery. The next item was from the Department of Public Works, the Highway Department, and it's reclaiming paving South and Valley Streets, it's Chapter 70 funding, and it's $117,000. The next item from Highway is reclaiming and paving Lindsay Road, again, that's Chapter 90 funded, and it's $270,000. The sidewalk project, Main Street sidewalks, crossing, striking, School Street, King Street, is grant funded and Chapter 70 combined. This grant was largely due to the efforts of Representative Colcott, who I've thanked numerous times for his effort, and that's a $400,000 item. The next item under Sewer is an upgrade, upgrade and rehab of wastewater plant and pump stations. The funding source is borrowing, and that's $175,000. The master plan for sewer that we need for maintenance and expansion has been moved from 2017 into 2016, and that's $150,000. There is a master plan, as you know, for water. The companion piece would be the master plan for sewer that we're being told is needed for plant expansion and growing the, the water and sewer use, which is sorely needed. The next item is underwater, and it's a continuing meter replacement program. This item is funded through retained earnings, and it's a $10,000 item. There will also be water service repairs with repaving, or being done at the same time that repaving is going to be done on Valley and South Streets. That's from retained earnings, and that's also $25,000. The Water Department continuing, we moved water and sewer improvements, which would be grant funded, up into the 2016 year as a start year, and the first year of this project is $1,900,000, the second is $1,000,000, in 2017 it's $1,200,000. In fiscal 18, it would be $2,100,000, and in fiscal 19, it would be $5,100,000. All of this is grant funded, and nothing is going to happen unless grants become available to support the continuation of the water and sewer improvement project. Vehicles and equipment, there is a list of new vehicles scheduled to be, be obtained, I should say, as opposed to purchased, in fiscal 2016. Stainless steel sander, fire chiefs replacement vehicle, bucket truck, which is a used vehicle, sewer department utility vehicle, DPW vehicle, sidewalk snow machine to replace a machine that's approximately 30 years old, payloader, Highway Department tractor with power rake, a new school van, and another Water Department truck. And it should be pointed out that on your spreadsheet, all of these items carry a face value, dollar value, which is for informational purposes only. All of these vehicles are purchased through the town's lease program, and the amount of the lease that is involved here is approximately $122,000. That amount is currently in the Highway Department operating budget, and the lease for these new vehicles will be level funded in the Highway Department operating budget. And there was a little concern about, you know, some of these numbers, because if you were buying these vehicles outright at the numbers listed, it would be staggering, but it is a lease program that has been very successful and that is continuing, and we're, we're supporting that. Facilities and grounds...
For a second there, on the lease, is this the total dollar figure, or just a lease value that we're paying per year on the lease for five years?
No, these figures that are included in the spreadsheet represent the purchase price of the vehicle if you were to go out and buy it off the lot.
Okay, over a five-year period?
Right, yeah. And the lease is over a five-year period. We, we own these vehicles at the end of the lease for a dollar, and we've been told that a number of the vehicles that will be going off-lease that we will own will be sold, and the proceeds will revert to the general fund, apparently. So there'll be money coming back on vehicles that are going off. The facilities and grounds, Central School Park design, or Center School Park design, CPA funded at $15,000. After the center school is torn down or demolished, there will be a, a park design developed for that space, and the cost of that is $15,000. There will also be another CPA funded project at the Prospect Mill River Bridge, the Prospect Street Mill River Bridge, the old bridge that's overgrown by the old mill, which was an actual road bridge when I first came to town. I have many stories to tell about that, but the bridge has fallen into disrepair, but it's going to be restored as a walking bridge, and apparently that's the $185,000, so you'd be able to walk across or ride a bicycle or look at the river from the bridge. There is highway garage, pole barn, trusses and roof. That will be through borrowing, and that's a $50,000 item.
An addition to what we have over there?
No, it's a repair of the existing shed building, new trusses, new roof.
Okay.
And $50,000. Also, an emergency generator at the Highway Garage and Fuel Station from borrowing at $28,000, and an emergency generator for the Town Hall from borrowing at $15,000, and Town Hall second floor HVAC, HVAC for the museum, which will locate, which will be located in that space, that's CPA funded at $50,000, and that project, we understand, will have to be incorporated in the design and development of the continuing Town Hall restoration, and obviously it can't be done independently or separately, it has to be tied into the, to the Town Hall renovation project. But there is $50,000 CPA funding for an HVAC system for the museum that will be on the second floor. Under the School Department, there is a replace Smith Academy walk-in freezer and solid-door refrigerator, that would come from borrowing, and that's $14,000. And replace Smith Academy elementary school phone system, also from borrowing at $19,500. There was also some talk about the advisability of doing a study of the phone system for the town as a whole, as opposed to piecemealing the school. Right now, Smith Academy is not able to talk to the elementary school, because the elementary school, when it was built, had a different phone system installed. Smith Academy's had an upgrade a couple times, it's a different system, the Town Hall has its system, so there was some feeling that it would probably make sense to look at doing a study and trying to get some kind of a comprehensive plan for all of the town buildings to be on the same phone system. So I don't know whether that would mean you would hold this particular thing up until the study is done, but that was where our discussion ended.
We've actually begun the process of, of having somebody come in, a consultant, and do that, Fran, for, for all the buildings, including, all the town buildings, including the schools, so...
Yeah.
I don't think they've made an appointment yet, as far as when they're coming, but, and I don't know how long it takes, by the way, as far, so it's to your point, I don't know if it's something that would be done, and a recommendation made prior to, yeah.
So those are the projects for fiscal 16, we think they fit with the limited information we have at this point about revenue and resources, and we would like to say that fiscal 16 looks like a relatively light year, whereas fiscal 17 and following look like pretty heavy years, each and every one of them. And the, the big ones in 17, of course, are going to be the Town Hall renovation, Phase Two Design Build, that's at $655,000, and, and then we have Colonial Acres Slip Linings is $400,000 in 2017, and then the other big ones are replace the Water Main, North Street, Eight Inch Main, 3,700 feet, $600,000, and then replace 5,280 feet, Eight Inch Water Main, King Street, $860,000. So those are, are looking to come from borrowing, and they are obviously significant amounts, and then there are other sums in there as well, but 17 looks like it will be a much bigger year than 16.
Okay, because we are replacing the sewer line down North Street, so why wouldn't we do those two at the same time?
Funding.
Funding, yeah. All right, I just hate to see, rip up this road and then repair the road, and then rip it up again.
Be like the state.
Ah, gosh. And, the walk-in cooler, the question that I have for the school, Brian, maybe you can answer this, the walk-in cooler, when we inspected it, the cooler looks, itself looks like it's in good shape, but maybe I'm wrong. Is it just a cooler, I mean, you're replacing the whole thing, is there a reason why we're replacing the whole thing and not just the condensator unit and the compressor?
I'm, I'm not sure how, what was presented by the superintendent to, to the Capital Planning Committee. I do know that we've been putting lots of patches and Band-Aids on that, on the freezer and the refrigerator at Smith Academy for, since I moved to town 15 years ago, so...
Yeah, it's original, original equipment, and as I recall, the, the discussion was not about the need to replace the box and door, but there were questions about a grant that had been obtained a year or so ago to make the operating components, the electrical components, more energy efficient.
Yeah, I can agree with that, but to replace the whole box, the older boxes are much better than the newer boxes, okay, the way they were built, okay?
Yeah, and I, I...
That's why I, I...
Yeah.
If I, if the box is in good shape, I personally would leave the box and then just do all your controls, and your compressors, and your condensers, and that kind of stuff, and put all brand-new stuff in that way.
And I really don't know what the...
Especially if it's a good working...
I was told the boxes were in, in need of replacement, or were in bad shape.
Yeah, and it could be the way we, we worded it on the, on the spreadsheet here, so, I mean, we can just get clarification from...
Yeah, and I know there was clarification on the electrical part of it, and they thought they could save the energy-saving devices and install those on the new...
I wouldn't have a problem doing that, because you have to upgrade that, but the box itself is, is, like, I mean, if it needs replacing, the doors or something like that are bad, but I don't recall seeing that.
I'm sure we have, have gotten, excuse me, that, you know, an appraisal or...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we would have, you know, John would have consulted with somebody to get that recommendation, so we can, we can follow up with that.
Okay. Thank you, Fran. Any others?
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Fran.
That's it.
Combined treasurer and collector. Okay, where are we going with that, Paul?
Well, that one and the combined water sewer enterprise funds were both notions put forth by Selectman Boyle. So we need to at least begin discussion of, you know, are we gonna, are these things that we want to pursue?
Well, I'm, for one, not in favor of going with a treasurer slash collector because the two jobs are totally different. There's, the collector has a whole different set of rules, whole different set of a job to do. And the treasurer, that job is strictly investing and pay, taking care of the town fund. So it's two different animals here.
Yeah, I mean, I have no, I have no opinion one way or the other on this. I would say that probably, well, I know this for a fact, about half the communities in the Commonwealth have a combined treasurer-collector. So it's a very common model. You know, how well it would work in Hatfield, I have no opinion on that.
I think that, and I, I agree with you, Ed, and I agree with you, Paul, as far as that many communities are going that way, but I think the majority of those communities also have turned it into an appointed position, not elected.
That's correct.
So I think for me, that's really what the, what the key is. Not that I'm pushing for it to be an appointed position, but I think to have an elected position of two different offices is a little risky, quite honestly.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think so unless it becomes an appointed position by the Board of Selectmen down the road, I would not be an advocate of combining the two positions as an elected position.
I feel the same way.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's that. And then the combination of the water sewer.
Water sewer enterprise. Phil, maybe you can shed some light on this here. I know it's two separate entities consolidating them. I'm not sure, one, is it legal? Because the state told us we had to separate and do water and sewer.
It's definitely, it's definitely legal. I can respond to that. DOR changed the rules there just a few years ago. And yeah, I've seen it, I've seen it in writing, though I haven't, you know, I wouldn't be able to put my hands on it right now.
The tough part is the people, it's one thing, almost we have 100, just about 100% of the town on water. We have about maybe 50%.
700 users on sewer.
On sewer.
Hmm.
How are we gonna determine that one? Okay, people are gonna be screaming, you know, when it comes to that part.
Well, I know, you know, this came up last year, not sure about the year before, but I know when we were having our budget discussions, the finance committee, I mean, to a person, was not in favor of this. So highly unlikely we would gain any support from them moving forward with it, but.
The concern I have, or at least the question, which might help me make a decision one way or the other, is the funds that come in to water and the funds that come into sewer, currently, the way it's set up with enterprise funds, do those monies come in, if they come in, and let's just say there's a profit at the end of the year, does that money stay within the water department if it's water money in sewer departments?
Now it does, yes.
Now it does?
Now it does.
So what, so what the, what we're talking about is actually co-mingling the funds.
Two together.
Both the outlay and the income. So theoretically, if water was making money and we wanted to use something for a water project, that could be used in the future to be, to make up a deficit in the sewer.
That's exactly right.
Is that correct?
Yep.
All right, so I'm not too keen on that. I think the two enterprise funds should remain separate and it gives us a better accounting of how things are going.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
Okay. You need votes on any of this, Paul?
No, I mean, I will know, you know, whether to dig into this anymore or not, but you know, when the, when the final warrant is prepared, you know, then you'll be voting on it and that's.
Ultimately, the people, I mean, I get it, you know, town meeting is where the decisions are made, but if we're looking for either support for or not supporting something, I think it's important to.
Well, yeah. I mean, you will, once the final warrant is prepared, the board will have to vote on it.
Right.
Before it goes to town meeting.
As a whole, I meant the individual.
That will be your official endorsement.
Yep, okay.
Right. Curb cut bylaw.
Yeah, we talked about this briefly a while back. The building inspector, our new building inspector brought to my attention that Hatfield doesn't have one.
We don't have a bylaw, but it's been, ever since I can remember, it's always been up to the DPW director or the superintendent to give permission for a curb cut for any new development or any new house. And that's how it's done in our town.
Does he have any criteria to go by?
I don't know. I don't think so. I've never seen anything.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that, you know, in both other communities, they had what they called, wasn't a curb cut, but like a driveway permit. You know, and they would go out and look at it and make sure that, you know, there's no tree in the way or something, or if it's gonna cause a hazard. Not too close to the intersection. We would only let them put in a 12 or 18-foot driveway, nothing of 36 feet, you know, then they would have to come to the Board of Selectmen. So I mean, that's, you know, my past experience how it worked. But again, it was free of charge, so, you know. We've never had a problem ever in this town, a curb cut, ever.
So I'm just passing information along.
Why create a problem? Why create a problem if there is no problem?
Yeah, I think if it is, is a concern or a potential issue, it's certainly worth addressing, but if it's just something, because, you know, the inspector just assumed we had one and there isn't one.
And there isn't one. I mean, I could.
If he can, you know, speak through you and just.
Examples from some other communities that I got from PVPC. And, you know, I could pass that information along to you. I mean, if we have.
Specifics.
Phil's got something in writing that's gonna make his job easier.
Right, and that's what we want to do. We want to be fair to the people asking for it and we want to have the regulations. But I mean, I think we need, personally, I would like specifics as to what, what the bylaw would say or what they're looking for.
I'll put something together.
Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to restrict anybody for anything from a development curb cut or, a curb cut is just that. It's to cut into the road or tie your property into the road. That's all it's doing is asking permission to join the two roads together and that's it.
Yeah, and it's not like you can deny, it's not like you can deny a curb cut, but you can regulate.
You can, yes, and that's up to the DPW director to look at the situation, make sure that there's no, no problem, no danger, no problem where it's gonna be too close to the intersection where somebody can't see, that kind of thing. So coming out onto the road, that's, have you ever had a problem?
Never.
Okay, so I guess my problem is if you don't have a problem, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Well, that's my philosophy.
This is coming from a building inspector?
Yeah.
Question?
Yeah.
So maybe he and Phil can have a quick conversation with you and see where we're.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
If in fact it was just to try to have something on file in case or, I don't disagree with Ed.
Okay.
Or Phil, if there's, if there's not a reason, let's leave it alone.
Okay, Smith Academy Park.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Selectman Boyle and I'm not sure what's going on here, but I guess it's, my understanding is that the trustees may want to, you know, have a, an article for the annual town meeting regarding, you know, the leasing the park or whatever the plan is here.
It's not leasing, it would be turned over to the town.
So what they're talking about is actually turning that property entirely over to the town of Hatfield.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I think that's.
I know the email, because I responded back to Anna, okay, hold it. And I saw that because it, and somebody made a comment about leasing and I questioned that right away. And she said that the person, that misunderstood that it's gonna be turned over to the town, it's not a lease.
So, yeah, it's just kind of a heads up. I, you know, that's what I've heard. Nobody specifically talked to me about it, about, you know, getting a warrant article together, so.
Because I know at some point, we have to have a meeting with them to find out what their plans are.
Nothing's been rescheduled then, huh?
Not yet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Lyons Pavilion, I think we already took care of that.
We already covered that.
Performance reviews, we're not gonna bring anybody's performance reviews before this at all.
Yes, Selectman Boyle wanted that put on there. I'm not entirely sure.
I am totally against having anybody's review on TV.
Yeah.
I will not do it.
No, I couldn't agree more.
Okay. I don't know how you feel about it, Brian, but it's not.
Well, it's a personnel conversation, so it's, yeah, it's not appropriate to do it.
Absolutely. Okay, we're on the same page.
Public.
Town hall parking. All right, I know there's an issue on the side of the building here for Bill, Bill Belden came in and Jane came in, Jane Betzel, and they talked about parking, fire lane out here and also have 15-minute parking. And we have another problem with the capelone parking here for long periods of time where we can't clean the snow out. So there's multiple problems here that have to be addressed. But one of them we can address probably right away and that's anybody that parks out here for any length of time, okay? Especially the employees here should park out and back, okay? Or in the front, one or the other. And not to mention any name. But anyway, I think you can take care of that, huh?
All right.
And then the highway department can get signs up as soon as we can get in the ground, putting 15-minute parking signs and no parking signs where there's no parking.
Soon as the ground breaks.
And also striping the area. So we're gonna have to probably in the spring get.
Doors aren't blocked.
Somebody back here to do line clipping to make sure we have a clear path coming out from the fire station because people are parking on that corner more and more and the trucks can't make that swing that comes around, so. I know we had a problem when they had the big meeting upstairs or in here for the insurance and we had to make them move their cars and stuff, so. Is there anything else that we need to address on the parking? Paul?
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
I talked to Mike McGrath about capelone parking over here and they have to move their cars. Other than that, they could be towed if we have to get them out of there.
Ah.
So, I mean, one thing is to take advantage of moving their cars out of there so they can clean the capelone, but the thing is to get them moved out of here and back over there.
Right.
Okay, so I don't know if we want to follow it up with a letter stating just that, that they have to and that way they have something to send around to all the tenants over there.
Okay.
They have to. Well, the only people from capelone that should be parking is in them handicap spots, the eight spots dedicated to them. That's why we dedicated the center school parking for the rest of the residents. In the last storm, there was three cars parked over there and this whole lot was full. That's what happened. So let's get the letter just stating just that, that behind center school is the majority of the parking and only handicap parking is over here.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else, Bill, that I forgot?
On the parking?
On the parking?
No, I'm just gonna comment that you still got three cars out there you can see haven't moved since Tuesday.
I know that.
Yeah. And you can tell because the snow's still there.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I mean, we even have people parking in where it says reserves for fire and air and was personnel. They do move the cars over and there was one car that was parked there Saturday and then was there again.
Well, like I told you, you got, you got an emergency, park right behind them.
That's what we're gonna do.
And if they can't get out, they're problem. Okay, we just can't, that's being disrespectful.
Yeah.
Okay, especially on an emergency site, if there's a problem. And I don't have a problem and if they complain to us, then we'll deal with it. Luminary room committee.
Yeah, the last time we talked about this, I said that, you know, we discussed the need for a charter and, you know, I was gonna get ahold of Peter Racklebush, who's been doing this for many years, to, you know, get a better idea of what's involved so I can, you know, start putting a charter together. I haven't talked to Peter yet, but that's on my, on my list of things to do.
It seems to me that a charter to do something like this voluntary thing is just a little much, quite frankly.
I think it needs, it can be something very simple.
A three-member committee or something like that, whoever wants to be on it.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe reach out to the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and.
Yeah, maybe some other organization can.
Local committee and just see.
Can take it on.
Take it on as a project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. See a good one.
Resignations and retirements, okay? Appointment, before we go into that, let's see, do we have appointments down here?
Yes. Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of appointments.
All right, let's go back into the, we're gonna take up resignations, retirement. Town administrator, okay, Paul, you're leaving. Town accountant's leaving. Veterans agent is leaving. And what we need to do is get RFP, okay, right away, get it out.
I put, I put ads together for the town administrator and the accountant, which I thought I brought with me, but I didn't. But I'll email them to you tomorrow.
Okay. And I'd like to see for, let's see, I won't be here for the next meeting, but you guys will be, review the documentation on the job description to make sure it fits and anything else that needs to be done. So we should take a look at that and.
I don't know that we've officially, do we need to officially accept the resignation?
No, I don't think you have.
No, we haven't. So do we need, but we need to officially.
You should, yeah.
The only one we haven't, I think we did.
The number one and three, you're right, we did Paul's and we did, and Paul's.
Just Paul and Paul.
We did the veterans agent also.
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't do Mike because it just came in last week.
Yeah, we didn't have the letter, yeah.
All right, so motion to accept Mike Lyons resignation effective Thursday, May 14th.
Motion made and I'll second it. Any further discussion? I'd like to thank Mike for many years of service here and everything he's done for the town and wish him well and wish him best of luck in his retirement.
Agreed.
Well, thank you and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, so we're on the move with those, those three as far as advertising. Budget schedule.
So I've talked to Darryl Williams, the chairman of the finance committee, who has reached out to his various members. It looks like the best night that will work for them, it will be Tuesday evenings. So I'm thinking about, you know, scheduling our first meeting like the last Tuesday in February and then, you know, schedule a couple of meetings during, during March.
We want to tie it up in April.
And tie it up in April, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna have to, probably in February and March, February is, you're gonna have to meet with all the departments that work, control the Board of Selectmen, go over their budgets. And unless the finance committee, we, we all used to sit in the meeting and go over them with, with the department heads, but for the last number of years, we haven't done that. And I think this year, we should.
Okay.
Okay, and hear them out and see, you know, what increases they have, what their proposed plan is and how they, they want to. and how they want to run their, their department and the budget, and what extra money is put in for what reason, and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some that you can, and I would call in even like the dog officer and people that level fund. Okay? Because some of those funds, some of those departments need to be up. But I don't think they do it. And I don't know if it's because they just want to level fund or what. But I know, like, you know, Scott, he should put more money in his account on some of the things. So he hasn't done that.
Yeah. So I think, you know, what I would like to propose to the Finance Committee is that, you know, we set up meetings on Tuesday nights, you know, other than the nights that the Board of Selectmen is meeting, because I don't think we can, I don't think that's gonna work, try to meet with them during a regular meeting. And then, Ed, when you come back, you have, you have regular meetings on the first and third Tuesdays?
The third, I have, right.
All right, so those, those aren't gonna work for you.
Right.
So we may have to schedule some meetings.
Unless it's a night meeting.
Oh, these would be night meetings, yeah.
Night meetings, it's okay.
Yeah, okay.
I got morning meetings.
All right.
Okay. What are the dates? You've got the last Tuesday in Feb?
I don't have the calendar with me, but let me go get it. Let me go get a calendar.
So you have the 24th of February. And, yeah, the earliest the Finance Committee meeting would be like 6:30, so I guess we should probably shoot for that. So February 24th. And now there's, and then there's actually five Tuesdays in March. So, yeah, I think the 3rd, the 17th, and the 31st. Can we do, start on the 10th, because I'll be, I'll be traveling probably on the 3rd.
Oh, okay.
Well, the 10th would be, is that supposed to be our...
That's, that's our meeting. We meet on the 10th and the 24th.
Can we do it on a Wednesday or a Thursday? Wednesday or Thursday would be all right.
Wait, we're in March here.
Yeah. But I'm saying we could do it on a Wednesday or Thursday night, too.
Well, that's, that's not good for the Finance Committee.
Oh, they want to stick on Tuesday nights?
Tuesday evenings.
Well, if we have to, on the 10th, we're at 5 o'clock. So we should wrap it up in an hour and a half. We'll just make sure that it wraps up an hour and a half, and then we'll go right into the Finance Committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
I see what you're saying.
So that'll, we'll deal with that. So let's do the 10th, 17th. That way we can give proposed dates, 10th, 17th. And what's the next one? 24th?
24th.
And what's the next one?
31st.
And that'll give us...
I think that would do it.
Enough, yeah, it should take care of it.
So the 10th and the 24th are gonna be after our regular, regular Selectmen meeting.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just need to keep the agendas brief.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'll throw those dates out.
We can pass it out to them and see how that works for them, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Next, any other questions on that?
Excuse me for one second. So, and so what we'll do is we would, they or we, or collectively, we will send out the particular departments whose budget we're going to be discussing in advance of the meeting, so they can be here to, to discuss.
Well, it depends on how the Finance Committee wants to, when they meet. I don't know if they want to meet along with us. See, there's a couple, this is a two-part. The Board of Selectmen is in control of a certain amount of budgets, okay? So we have, we have like the Fire Department, we have Police Department, we have Highway Department. We control all those budgets. So we would go and meet with the department heads over our, our control of our budget. The other departments would probably come and meet the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. We'd all meet together and go over them.
Okay.
Okay?
I know there's one particular department in particular that asked just for a heads up as to when, when the meeting would be, so that they can have the conversation, because they felt they were given short notice last year, so.
And they should, they should have the notes, so we should have some kind of a schedule. Once, once the dates are confirmed, then you can have some...
Who's coming in when?
Who's coming in, what kind of a schedule.
Yeah, okay.
And that way everybody will be on the same...
Yeah.
Page here.
Thank you.
Okay. And just, just watch for that, because you're right. There's sometimes we don't, we don't even let the people know that we're taking up their, their budget.
Right.
And that's wrong, because they should be here to defend it.
Agreed.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, we're gonna go right into the Emergency Service Building. And that, I believe, is the work that's left to do over there. That's what we're going with this here.
Okay.
And one, I know I brought this up at a meeting, a couple, a couple of meetings ago. What we're in need of over there, we need the fence that connects the fence that goes across behind fishtails, connects our building for a safety fence there where nobody can walk through, because the kids are cutting through there, and the generator's there, and there's pipes there for the refrigeration. And so that needs to get in right as soon as the spring, as soon as we can in the spring. The generator, we're getting prices right now to connect the generator into the fire station. That was never done. Okay? I'm not sure where we're at with that, Bill. I know Buster was supposed to be getting that. You can comment on that.
Yeah, Buster had somebody here last week that deals with these types of things. And he'd get the price, and then, so they're pricing, there's some sort of switch that we have to get to go from the generator back to the fire station. So he was giving Buster a price on that to get that done.
All right. And, and then the other, the other thing was the, to get the cable in there and a TV in there for weather. Okay? Because you've got one in that complex for news, and the other one was for weather. In case of an emergency event, you can see both of them at the same time. Keep, monitor that. And what else was there?
Well, the telephone, we mentioned that they're doing a survey, so...
Yeah.
Because there was some concern about, because we're on Comcast now.
Right, just for having an alter, potentially having an alternate feed in from another carrier. Yeah, yeah, that'll be part of their, what they look into, chief.
So the, and then the washer was done, is done. So the bills were submitted for those. So that's, that's, there was that gear extractor that we had to have done. So that got done. The downspout?
Oh, yes.
Is that right now, the downspout comes down to the right of the door, the personal entrance door? And the water just kind of spills out and out. The other day in the storm, we had a hard time getting that door open, because water come down and the ice froze there, so.
Well, what I did notice, Paul, is the concrete is heaving, okay?
Mm-hmm.
On that, because the door does not swing open all the way, and it gets caught, it sticks open. Okay, it hits the concrete, so that's, that slab is lifting up. And that's the contractor's problem here. So I think we held, we held back money for that, didn't we?
Yeah, they, they have not received their final payment.
Okay. All right, so there's a problem.
And, and, and just to update, there's nothing to update. Two months ago or so, I submitted the performance evaluation form that the state requires. And I also meant to, also required to send that to the contractor. So they got it, and within a, within a day, I got a phone call from the contractor, who was not happy with, with it. And that's the last I heard from them.
So let it be.
And, and, you know, we still legitimately owe them, you know, quite a bit of money. But it's like, hey, must be nice.
All right. Can we get a breakdown of what's held and how much money we have?
Yeah, I'll have that for, I'll have that for you for the next meeting, yeah.
Okay. Maybe just email it to me, so I can see it also. And that way we'll know exactly how much money we got left to spend and to finish up over there. Because whatever is left over, I'd like to use some of that money for the generator out here on the Town Hall.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there will, there'll be, there'll be three categories. There'll be money from the actual last payment. There'll be money from the held, the 10% required money. And then, and there's actually money left over, you know, from the budget, so.
Right, okay. Yes, the only one that we can touch is the money left over from the budget.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right.
And then whatever he didn't do.
Yeah.
Okay? Because there's a lot of things that he didn't do, he was supposed to do, and he didn't do.
Yes. So actually, you know, we working on, I got in a quote from Godfrey Sign for posting no, no parking on all the, all the apparatus doors over there, including the COA right across. And then we were gonna put what's on, what's behind each door, you know? And that, that quote is $1,300. And then we also talked about getting our own server over there, because twice already now, we've had electricity out here. We work off of this server, where we had electricity over there because of the generator, and we couldn't do our reports because the server's down here. So we're working on getting our own server over there. But I just got the quote today, and that's...
Five grand, right?
Try like 13.
Well, I'd rather put the generator outside and leave this one the way it is.
Well, that's, you know, long as we, I mean, we've, we've had two incidents already in only three months. You know, that, since we had our new software over there, where we couldn't do incident reports because the server's down here. So that's why we looked at doing our, our own server over there.
Oh, okay, yeah. But if we're gonna spend that much for a server, that's a lot of money for a server.
That seems awfully expensive.
Yeah.
It's almost a generator.
Well, it is, it is a generator. You can put a generator, generator out there for about 6,000 bucks. That'll take care of that whole room and the heating and whatever, but...
Yes. But the fence, I noticed Jeff sent an email around the last time, he had concerns about that fence. But that fence, believe it or not, was voted by the Board of Selectmen quite a few years ago. Your predecessor was here at that time, that's how long ago it's been back. Because we've always had a concern about that. We come out of that apparatus bay with a truck, and kids are flying through there with bicycles or driving through. So we've wanted this fence forever, you know, so. Well, almost forever, but it seems like it.
So those are the projects, I'd like to just put that in the record, that those are the projects that need to be completed over there.
Mm-hmm.
And that we take the balance, complete them, and then whatever balance is left, we'll use... We'll have to go to town meeting and switch it back over to here. And if it's not, the projects aren't done by town meeting, then we'll just leave that funds there and, and leave it in the account.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Anything else, Paul?
No, I think that covered it all, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, Brian, you got anything?
No, no, that was, that was good, thanks.
Okay, appointments.
I think that one of these, Ed, was Lydia brought to our attention that our original appointments of some of the Hatfield Housing Plan Advisory Committees, when we voted upon them, actually the paperwork and everything creating, creating the particular organization wasn't officially accepted yet, so. So that's what, that's what this is. This is just to make sure we're...
This is housekeeping.
This is housekeeping, right.
So we created, we voted to create the committee.
The committee, yeah.
And we created, and we already appointed these people.
And appointed these people, so I'm not quite...
But the paperwork and the official documentation establishing that committee wasn't completed before we made these appointments.
Right, right.
So Lydia just wants to make sure that...
So let's do the reappointing over...
Reappointing of the Hatfield Housing Plan Advisory Committee. I don't, do you want to go through the names or...
We got Tom, Ross Masler.
Yeah. John Wilks.
John Wilks.
Paul Labby. And Sanford Belden. All which we approved previously, but this is just to do housekeeping. So I make a motion to appoint those gentlemen to the Hatfield Housing Committee. Plan Advisory Committee.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried, thank you.
We also have a request from a Building Inspector to, he just wanted to let us know that he's looking to have an alternate inspector for...
Gas.
Gas and plumbing, an alternate member. So I make a motion to appoint Larry Eldridge Jr. in that position of Inspector Gas, Assistant Inspector Gas Plumbing Alternate.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried, thank you. Okay. Human Resource.
Would, would you guys mind, and I'm sorry, Paul, because I know you put a lot of work. I honestly didn't get a chance to really go through this, and it looks like it's kind of a, it's a pretty good-sized document.
It's, the changes are minor and more housekeeping stuff, but let's, let's, we can go back to it.
It was pretty simple, because there was like one paragraph in there...
It's repeated.
Under sexual harassment, that was duplicated.
Yeah.
And he was just wiping that out and stuff like that. But you guys can take care of that.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'm sorry about that, I just...
Save it for another day.
Okay, thanks.
Put that off to the next meeting, put it on there, that's all. Center School.
Yeah, just a quick update. So we're, we're moving ahead with the consultant. ATC, our environmental consultant, has brought on board Hill Engineering. They've worked on a number of demolition projects with them in the past. So Hill will, you know, help put the specs together for the bid package. So when the process, I received an initial proposal from them, and I, I thought the pricing was way too high, so I sent it back to them. And so I'm awaiting to get a new proposal. And so that's where we're at, are with that. At your suggestion, Ed, I called Douglas Auctioneers, and I met with, with a gentleman from that, from there this morning. He came, he came down to take a look. And he basically said, well, the cupule is probably worth about five grand, but, you know, the demolition contractor is gonna take that into account. He said there was, the only thing that was of any value in there were the folding chairs, and they're worth about five bucks apiece, he said, you know, this summer.
Okay.
Yeah, so he said...
We asked.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was worth a shot.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right.
Nothing for the pigeon carcasses up in here?
Fumigation crew come in and take them out? No. Accident reporting.
Yeah, we had an incident here where a gentleman slipped on the front steps. He was okay. He did have to go to Cooley Dickinson, but he was fine. But I didn't even know about it until the next day. So, you know, I need to put a, get a, put a policy together for accident reporting? Because, you know, if, if we were to get...
Well, there's a woman that fell out here, outside here also.
Okay.
And Jane, I told her to make note of it.
Okay.
Put it in her...
When was this?
Two weeks ago.
Oh, okay, see, I didn't know about that one either. Because if there is a claim against the town, it goes through me. So I need to know about these things, so I, I need to put something down in writing, yeah.
You need to let them know that the policy is that it goes to the Town Administrator, any accidents, anywhere...
Anywhere involving anything that...
Gets reported to you.
Town property, yeah.
And there should be some kind of a form that you should create that they need to fill out.
Yeah.
And get the forms to each department.
So I'm, I'm working on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, hiring procedures.
Yeah, well, we talked about this at the last meeting. Ellen, you know, raised some questions. And I, well, I was, you know, we were talking about three new hires in particular. The Building Inspector, the Tax Collector, and the Health Agent. So I was intimately involved with the hiring of the Building Inspector and the Tax Collector. And in the case of the Building Inspector, the only individual who applied... And in the case of the building inspector, the only individual who applied, who had the required qualifications is the individual that we, in fact, hired. So that's pretty straightforward. And in terms of the tax collector, we had several people apply. There was only one individual who actually met the qualifications. But that individual withdrew their application. So we hired the next, actually, we hired by far the most qualified individual who applied. And though she had not actually been a tax collector in town and had the certifications, you know, her career in the business was such that she actually trained tax collectors all over the state for many years. So she may not have had the exact qualifications that we're looking for. But, you know, typically when you put these advertisements together, the qualifications are not, are not set in stone. Usually use terms like preferred or highly desirable. So we really lucked out in that situation. Now, as far as the health agent is concerned, I wasn't really involved with that. But I went and reviewed all the paperwork. And once again, you know, highly desirable, preferred, those types of language was used. The only firm requirement that I saw on the hiring of the health agent was that experience in housing court is a must. And I reviewed the woman who was hired resume. And she's been working in, was it Southampton, I think? And she's already been in housing court several times. So I saw no irregularities.
I think along the lines that you mentioned, Paul, and I think maybe the question was, do the applicants meet whatever criteria we spell out? Which is kind of a, you certainly want a minimum of qualifications. But you also have a wish list of, maybe the person has all this, which is why we use, you know, this is the desirable background or this, you know, candidate, the preferred candidate should have or shall have, and then what have you. But, yeah, I think you're right. I think it's almost impossible to get every single.
Particularly, you know, for these part-time municipal jobs, more often than not, you're just not going to find an ideal candidate. You know, because they're part-time municipal jobs.
Come right up here.
Just in line with what you had said, Paul, in terms of the candidate that withdrew from the tax collector position, had that person not withdrawn, what would have happened?
I really don't know. Because we established a screening committee, which I was a part of. It was a three-member screening committee. And I don't know what our final determination would have been. Because, you know, that bridge was never crossed.
Well, I, in terms of qualifications, if you have people that come in with a specific license or certification, and that's what the job is requiring, then isn't that what needs to be hired?
Not, no, not necessarily. What if you, what if you get someone who thinks, who, the town things can do the job, but nobody who's, who's applied, you know, meets all the requirements, but, you know, the opinion of the Board of Selectmen or the screening committee, whatever, thinks that that person is capable of learning the job, you know, quickly? You know, well, that's the person you're going to hire.
I think to be clear, too, in this particular instance, for that position, the state grants the new appointee or an elected official for that matter, who, you know, if they don't have that particular certification, a particular amount of time to get it, to make sure it's official. And that took place after their appointment.
Are you talking about a different situation?
I'm talking about the tax collector, if that's what our conversation is about. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
She's certified?
Yeah. Almost immediately upon getting the appointment.
Because I thought you had to take a class. I thought that was a requirement, that you had to take a certain amount of class time.
I don't know all the specifics, but there's a certain assessment of some sort that you have to do. But yes, yeah. That's why I wanted to say that, to make sure everybody was clear who's watching, that our tax collector is certified in whatever the state qualifications you need to have to hold that position.
Within a certain period of time.
Yes, and that all took place, yeah.
Like, I know the assessors have to get qualified within the year.
This was within weeks, actually, for the collecting.
That wasn't my understanding. But anyway, so that, if that in fact is the case, so that fell in line with what you were looking for and how that worked. In the case that I was specifically talking about with the health agent, there were at least two different ads that I saw for the position, each having a little bit different set of criteria that, criteria that was necessary in order to, you know, be considered for the position. One had specifically stated, I believe, something to the effect of three to five years' experience. The other, most notably, was to be a licensed registered sanitarian within the state. And so that's not something you, you know, receive after taking a quick assessment. So I'm not sure how that falls in and how different inspections are being conducted by an uncertified candidate. That's my question.
The person in, the one that was hired was in the process of getting her certification, okay? And that she said that she would be certified in the spring for, for that part. And the other thing she was working on was her other, one other certification that she had to get. And she got them both, or she got that one and she's going to get another one in a couple of months, so.
So, but the ad didn't say that. The ad didn't say, you know, I've seen ads before that say, you know, upon hire, you know, you need to be certified within six months or a year. The ad didn't say that. I didn't realize there was a learning curve in all this that, you know, from the advertisement that, you know, we need people ready to, you know, on the get-go. So that's somewhat misleading.
No, it's a matter of how the interviews go and it, how, who's going to do the best job? Who's going to, everything comes into play when you, you know that.
Well, I was talking, I was talking to Paul, we had had a conversation. I know a couple of people that would have applied specifically for the tax collector position that didn't because it said certified. And so in that situation, you're leaving out people that may be, you know, a very solid candidate that do not apply because they don't have the certification.
But you don't discard somebody just because they don't have the certification. They might have everything else that you want, but the certification is right on the horizon. Or they, as long as they're, they get their certification, okay, they might be the best candidate. So that's the one you're going to hire. And the decision is, you have to get your certification with a certain period of time. That's, that's just on how the hiring goes.
Usually it states that in ads, is what I'm saying, you know, in advertisements for a position, that certification is required. So I'm just saying, you know, what the position was advertised for and what was looked at for the candidates doesn't seem to match up.
Well, I can tell you for the town collector, I have the application in front of me. The ad, preferred applicants, preferred applicants should have a minimum of two years of responsible experience in a town collector's office and be certified by the Mass Collectors and Treasurers Association.
So.
So preferred, so I don't know why people wouldn't apply if they, it doesn't say candidates must have. It says preferred candidates. So I don't know why someone wouldn't throw their hat in the ring or not interpret it that they couldn't apply.
You can't deny anybody from applying, right? Absolutely not.
No, you can't deny anybody, and anybody can apply for anything at any time, obviously. But I guess, looking at that, to me, I would think that it, because it said preferred, that you look down the list on their resume, they don't have this credential certification, they're not in the preferred category.
I don't, I don't get the gist of that, Ellen, to be honest with you. If I were, if I were interested in any position that I saw advertised, and it didn't say you must have this or you must have that, but we prefer that you did. And if I had some of those things or knew I could get them, if I had a background in that position, for example, as a collector, or having done collecting and maybe don't have the, you know, the licensure that you need to get, I'd, personally, I'd probably, if it was something I was interested in, put in my application. And then if the Board of Selectmen or the screening committee did or didn't interview me, then, then that's that. But again, it says preferred, so it leaves a little opening there so that you can maybe get the candidates who don't have it yet but are willing to or able to get whatever it is back, licensure that you're looking for.
And, okay, so, and there were two advertisements I said that I saw at least that were each a little bit different. So I just, there's discrepancies there that I'm concerned about in terms of how the town proceeds in their, you know, hiring.
Well, there's procedure that we go by, and I believe it's met by everybody, that the same RFP is out there, request proposals. And it's pretty much a stamp document that we put out.
Well, and the other, the other instance I was talking to Phil about, and I think I brought that up at the last meeting, was there was an assistant building inspector who was not considered and who was eliminated before anything because he didn't have the certification.
If there's a building inspector, a little bit different, okay, they have to be certified. They can't, you can't be a building inspector if you're not certified. So the certification has to happen, okay? If they don't have the certification, then they have to get it. Then they can apply for building inspectors positions.
Was that language in the, in the, for the health agent, too? The preferred?
I don't remember. I don't remember if that, I don't believe, I don't believe it was.
I don't recall that. That's all I'm saying, is that it didn't, it stated about being a certified, a registered sanitarian, and, like I said, I believe, three to five years' experience. Do you have those ads, Paul?
I do.
Oh, with you?
No, that's something I carry on board.
You're all set, okay. Thanks. I'll maybe see you tomorrow, anyway. We're not going to spend much more time on this, another five minutes. This document, yeah, let's go, let's go move on to this next thing. This was the, the chapter 61A that we agreed to get it out of there. The attorney put the wrong lot number, okay? But it's the, it's the whole lot there, so it really, we voted the right way. So it's just a matter of paper shuffling. So Jeff and I signed it, and I don't know if you signed it yet or not.
Okay, so you want a motion to accept the revised, was this just a heads up?
I don't think we have to, because it all, it's underneath that one parcel.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
That's what I explained to the, to Paul. This annual report, Paul's going to have to answer that one. It might be as simple as that there was no action taken. Because every January, we have the Housing Department, DHCD. Housing Community Development. The Redevelopment Authority has to send in a, in a report on an annual basis. And in January, that report goes in, but there's been no action taken in January, so. So I think, Paul, on this DHCD.
Yeah?
Okay, we've got to do a document in January, a report to them through the Housing Authority. It's, this is a simple one. There's a form that's filled out by the state. I mean, by the, by the Redevelopment Authority, which we.
Don't really have.
I don't even know if we even have a quorum to do that.
We don't.
But I think you can fill it out and get it to the state, just so we're in compliance. And it's a matter of just putting in there, filling out the form, that no, no action was taken by the Redevelopment Authority in this past year, and period, that's it.
Okay.
So it's a simple document, just to get it to them.
Send them a letter.
Just send them a letter. There's a specific form.
Okay. Enclosed. All right. I've got this memo here that was sent to Charlie Konecki, the district health officer. So, and I'm assuming that's the ad that appeared in the newspaper?
I don't know what was in the newspaper. But there were two, there were two different ads.
Okay.
They were worded differently.
All right, well, this is the only, yeah, this is the only one that I have.
And at least two, maybe, maybe there was a third, I'm not sure.
This is the only one that I have. But anyways, this one reads, "The Hatfield Board of Health is seeking qualified applicants to provide health agent services. The health agent is responsible for conducting various public health inspections in accordance with state sanitary and environmental codes, enforcing Board of Health regulations and town bylaws, and addressing other related duties under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. Experience as a health agent for a municipality is highly preferred." And the position is approximately eight hours per week, benefits are not included. And that's it. So it says, "Experience as a health agent for a municipality is highly preferred," so.
Isn't there qualifications in there?
There's a job description.
And that's the only ad you have? Well, I'll have to get to my other.
That's all I have.
Okay, okay. We're going to move on.
Yep, I'll talk to Paul separately about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, accounts and reports of urban renewal agencies. What's this one about here? Well, we have to.
What is that? Oh, that's. Probably similar to the one we just gave.
This is yours, isn't it, the one that you were doing this grant or something?
No, this, this goes back to what we were just talking about, the Redevelopment Authority.
All right, so we don't have to worry about that. You're going to take care of that.
I'll figure that out.
Okay. Is there any other thing we're going to talk about? Going to go into executive session?
Sure. All right, make a motion, go into executive session and not return to open session?
Under, under, hold on a second here. Under number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detriment effect on a negotiating position of the body, public body. Motion made. And a second to go into executive session, less go aye.
More aye aye.
And we will not be returning. And we will not be returning to open meeting here. Okay, thank you, everyone, have a good evening, and watch out for the snow tonight, be prepared. Thank you.